Thank you. If you can't with me, we'll avoid it. Next, our minutes meeting. Thanks all of you back for being here with us tonight. I'll call a meeting to order and I may ask Jerry if he will lead us further.
My most gracious heavenly Father, we offer a dish to you now, be with us in decisions that we make, help us to have clarity of to put aside things that we think are just our thing that we want, that we'll do what's best for the college. And when we leave here, we'll all be together at one call. Thank the Lord, the Lord's staff, all the people that helped the college and that were sprouted hard. We thank them for everything you can do, whatever, these things we pray and worship.
Amen. Thank you, Eric. All right, any public comments? Man, Dr. Eric, we're waiting on you. I said, hit me here before finish the prayer. You can get to the point.
All right, we'll move to President.
I have just a couple of things I'd like to break your attention. The summer graduation ceremony, we did have to go ahead and postpone that. We canceled it, scheduled for this Friday, Friday, and we had to cancel that because of COVID issues. And we really didn't want to get seven, eight hundred people in auditory together at one time. It felt like it was the right thing to do, and so we canceled that in hopes that they will come to a graduation ceremony in December, when we have that graduation. Of course, they're graduating, they're just not coming to the ceremony. I speak about COVID for just a minute. We are making adjustments as we go along. You know, we were hoping up until about three weeks ago, we didn't really, it wasn't that big of an issue, but it's become an issue. Everybody knows, so we're making whatever adjustments that we need to. Our in-service activities, which were scheduled for next Monday through basically Thursday of next week, it's all going to be done Zoom as opposed to face-to-face. Again, we have normally about 275 of our faculty and staff that get together in the Student Union Building, and we just didn't think that was a good idea to get them together at this time. And so we're going to do it Zoom, which is what we did last year. We didn't like it. This is very good for it to be Zoom, but I think that's the best, safest route to go. We're looking at our fall classes coming up, which will be scheduled for August, August the 23rd. And we're, right now, we're, we're looked over our classes and our academic classes that we have. We, ninety-eight percent of those classes, we have the option to either do face-to-face or online. And so we're giving students a choice. They can go online or they can do face-to-face. We're also looking at the face-to-face classes to determine the size, the number in the class. Based on the size of the classroom, we'd like to not have more than twenty or twenty-two in class for social distancing. I think our faculty would appreciate that. I think the students would appreciate that. So we're looking at the size of the classes, and if we need to have a second class, two sections of the same class, then we're looking at that as an option. Our biggest concern going into the fall semester now is the workforce class. And we had those problems, as you know, last year, social distancing. We tried, we tried to limit the size of the classes, which we haven't done yet, but it's something that we'll have to take into consideration. We're looking at bringing the students in at different times as opposed to bringing them all in at one time and shift the students. But those classes that we have in welding and cosmetology and those kind of programs are the ones that suffer the most because of COVID, suffered the most last year. So we're just kind of working as we can, making decisions as we need to. But right now, I'll tell you that our enrollment is up. Our enrollment is up six point one four percent from what it was last year. And last year, our enrollment was down eleven percent from what it was in 2019. So we're up for now unless people start getting afraid and start deciding they want to drop classes for whatever reason. But I think we're going to be, we're going to be good going into the fall semester. I think we're prepared. We met with our faculty already some today. We met with our instructional administrators today. And if we have to pivot, and if for some reason in the middle of the year, we have to pivot and go directly, go to online format like we did in March of 2020, we'll be prepared to do it. So I think we've done everything we can do to be prepared to move forward. And we just take it day by day and see what happens and make decisions. As I told them today, we're going to make decisions that are in the best interest of the safety of faculty and staff and our students. So that's kind of where we are with it. Anybody have any questions about that?
Any indication of where TDCJ?
Absolutely not. It's a day-to-day deal at TDCJ. We can find, we can find out in 24 hours, they're going to close them for three months. And TDCJ is the biggest guessing game. And obviously, where it will hurt us with TDCJ is with our tuition fee revenue. Our contact hour funding is not going on. Our contact hour calculation is not going on. So we're concerned about TDCJ. If we can start the semester on the 23rd, then we can start the semester, then we can, we can make adjustments as we go through. But we just need to get started, and that's the problem. It is a problem. But that's a good question. TDCJ is a big question mark out there. I talked to Sam today, talked to Sam Harley today. We talked about it a little bit, and he'll tell you the same thing. He just know when. Okay, I wanted to mention also the financial aid audit review. We have no results from that. We're still waiting to hear back from that, and as soon as I hear back from that, I'll let you guys know where we are and what we, what the results of that are. The next board meeting that we have initially, we have our board meetings, as you know, on the fourth Monday of each month. But because of the, the tax situation in terms of having a public tax opportunity, we, so that we didn't have to have another meeting in September, in the middle of September, we moved the August board meeting to August the 30th. And so that helps us not have to have a meeting in mid-September, which we've always had to have. We'll have our tax hearing at that meeting.
Six P M. Or seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Regular meeting time, regularly. Okay, and that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me? Or comments?
All right, if we have no comments, we'll move on to number four. Consider and discuss 2021 job classifications and salary study.
Let me start off. I know you probably had a chance to look over the memo that was sent out to you. I want to express our deepest appreciation to the Board Budget Committee that met with us. I think we lost count of the hours, how many hours it was. I think we went into weeks instead of, instead of hours and days, went into weeks. But they did, they did a really great job of meeting with us, helping us, us helping them understand what we were trying to do, us helping them understand and answer questions, and they did a great job, I think. I can't, I can't say enough good things about them and what they did. They spent many, many, many hours with us trying to work through the salary study and classification. It was David Monk and Mike Henry and Steve Grant and Ray Raymond. And basically, I think it was, I don't want to speak for them. I'll give them an opportunity to speak as well. But basically, I think it was their recommendation to move forward with the job classification salary study to do it on a two-year basis as opposed to a one-year basis, which is what we were originally proposing, that it would be done over two-year implementation. Employees will receive one half of their increase in the first year, and then in the second year, they would receive the second half of the, of whatever increase that was there for in salary study. The total implementation cost would be nine hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. One hundred and seventy-nine employees are almost sixty percent of our total employees will see some form of adjustment from the salary study. And I'll just stop there and see if any member of the committee would like to have any comments, if you'd like to make about salary study.
I just
Or y'all talked out.
I feel good about our end result. It took a long time, a lot of effort to get there, but I think we're all together on it. And so I just feel real good about it. And I'm ready for recommend, recommending it as, as we presented.
David, would you like?
I would just say that I appreciate Steve Grant and Mike Henry being good colleagues to work with. You know, there's, there's no question. I think that if there's, if there's something we do agree on, and that is that we, we didn't find everything that, that we liked, but we found an awful lot that we didn't like. And in the spirit of compromise and finding middle ground and putting in financial responsibility, I think it produces a good result. And that result across the spectrum yields over a two-year period more than a sixteen percent increase in non-faculty salaries and more than an eight percent increase in faculty salaries. So we believe it represents the greatest single step toward particularly closing that open hole at the, the entry level in order to be able to more effectively recruit and hire the people that, that we need and to allow them to view TBCC as, as a good career opportunity. So all in all, over the sixteen or eighteen hours or however it is, that we were together, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of brainstorming. But I think bottom line represents a good result for, for the college and for all of the folks that are supporting it.
Yeah.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Steve.
Happy as clam.
I'm about, I just add one thing to that, though, is that I think this gives us some structure that we, if we talk about in the meeting, it's a living document. It continues every year, has to be updated, but it gives a structure that we never had before in, in our salary and classification study, which is well needed.
I would like to say that I think Janine Dodson, her staff did an excellent, excellent job with this. We've got other colleges, and I think I mentioned this to the Board Budget Committee, but we've got other colleges asking us to, I think, probably hire her to do a salary study for them. We're not going to let her do that. But I think that it's a, it's really something. I, President, was it Kilgore? Kilgore called us this week wanting to, and I've talked to the President there because I was trying to get information from all the Presidents around our region and, and trying to get them to convince their HR directors to give us that information. And they're calling us wanting the information, how, how we did it. And so I just can't say enough about the job that she's done and the job that her staff has done. And also the VPs, they were, the VPs and all the other staff members and, and other members of the college have been involved in this for the last three months. It hasn't been done in isolation. There's been a communication with the Faculty Association, the Staff Association, communication with each one of the different parts of the college. So I think it's well communicated what we're trying to do, and, and I think again, to me, it's a game changer for the future of the college in terms of moving forward and being able to have a structure that we could use for a long, long time that we've never really had before. So I think, I really feel very good about getting it done. And I just feel like it's a, again, I appreciate the fact that the, the committee and other members have, have been willing to move forward with it. So I think we're good. Janine, do you have anything you want to say?
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you again for, for keeping an open mind and, and, you know, just going along with the, with the punches and just, and taking the time and understanding and grasping the information. I know it's completely foreign to a lot of you. And so I truly, truly appreciate, and I know the employees appreciate you guys taking the time and listening to us and understanding the need.
I'd like to say happy words. First of all, I would like to thank the committee, David Monck and Steve Grant, Mike Henry. And that, this is, and I've been on, involved in the college now for nineteen years. And this is the hardest-working committee that we've had by far. Not only by extra effort that we've put in, that the committee has put in, but the time that they've put in. And so I just want to thank that committee for what they have done, and I think they have come out with a good product. And I'm just real happy about it. And then I would like to thank Janine. I'd like to thank David Hopkins, Christie, Brett, and Dr. Gary King and Dr. Philip Cornell. They, they stayed the whole time. And then I'd like to tell you a story on myself. You know, last week, last time we were here, I was riding back to Coleman, and I got thinking about how much time we put in all that. Well, I've driven four hundred and eighty miles for this committee meetings. And I've put in twenty-six hours of talks in this room and that room back there. And I got thinking about comparing that to something. Well, Ann and I, we, for years, we always go to Branson, Missouri on vacation. From my home in Coleman, Texas, to the hotel that we stay at every year. It's four hundred and eighty-nine miles. So that's something for me to compare how mu, how much effort I put in on this committee over the last three, four weeks or five weeks. But anyway, I've enjoyed, and so I want to thank each and every one of you. Oh, I missed out on Scott Wood. Scott's not here tonight. Scott did sit for all of whom. And I think he's going to be a great person for David. And I think he probably learned a lot, lot about what's going on during that few days that we were all together. But again, thank all of you. All right, we'll move to item number five.
We need a motion to approve and vote for it.
Just a recommendation. Okay, we need a motion to approve the recommendation on job classification and salary study.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Matt makes that motion. Terry seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
One, one thing I would like, I brought this up in our last meeting, and I don't believe there was resistance to it, but it wasn't thoroughly discussed. Regarding the personnel policy that accompanies the classification study, I mean, I'm good with approval, but I believe we do see a need for some additional work on that regarding certain authorities, et cetera. And, and I'm very comfortable with, with approval subject to your commitment to bring back at the next meeting some revisions that not address this.
We're already working on some of those revisions, and we'll have, we'll have, maybe not the next meeting, but we'll have them. Soon as possible.
All right, motion made. Motion second. I hear any other discussion? If not, I hear all in favor say aye. All votes like sign. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Ron Day. Ron, how do you feel?
I vote yes with the committee unanimously.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Dr. Charlie, you're not there, are you? No, he's not there. He said he was going to be in location, and it probably wouldn't have been since. All right, so thank you. That is great, that we're good, that we're moving on. Number five, consider and discuss faculty, staff, and compensation adjustments.
This was another recommendation from the Board Budget Committee, and it's a compensation adjustment for full-time TBCC employees that will be receiving less than fifteen hundred dollar additional compensation in 2021, 22 derived from salary study. The compensation will be the difference between the fifteen hundred dollars and the amount received in the 2021, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two by each employee based on the salary study. The compensation adjustment is a one-time adjustment that does not impact the salary study and will not be added to the employee's base salary. The cost of the compensation adjustment is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. It is recommended the compensation adjustment be taken from the 2021, twenty, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021 reserves and provided to employees in a single check. Anybody have any comments, or do we need to explain that even a little bit better, or are we okay?
I'm all right with it.
Anybody have any questions about that? We'd be happy to answer them. Again, what we're, what we're doing is with those people that are not receiving an increase because they were at the end of the salary range, or they were out of the salary range for the, for the next two years, actually, because the salary study will be given up to fifteen hundred dollars compensation in a one-time adjustment. And if, if, for example, a person in the salary study was going to receive a thousand dollars over the next two years because that's where they fell in the range, then they would receive only five hundred dollars. So it's a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars is what they will receive in one check.
You might have said this, Dr. King, but it's going to be payable in, in the end of our fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, we're going, we're going to pay it out if it's, if it's approved, we're going to pay it out of this year's fiscal year budget. As a matter of fact, Janine said today that she thinks she can get that out pretty quickly. Anybody have any questions about this? Any comments? The board committee.
All right, I hear motion, and we can, that will approve the compensation adjustment for the faculty staff. David, you make that motion. Paula, Steve, second that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All votes like sign. Motion carried. Well, I asked Ron Day again. Ron?
Yes. I agree. Vote yes.
Vote yes. Thank you, sir. All right, that's a unanimous vote on that item there. We'll move to item number six, review the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget.
Again, let me just emphasize the, the appreciation to the Board Budget Committee again. I can't say that enough. But we spent a lot of time working on this as well, and we've, we spent a lot of time working on it over the last really three months. So David Hopkins, you want to give us a kind of a bird's eye view of where we are with that? And let me just say that this will be, this is to be discussed tonight. If anybody has any questions about it, obviously, if you have any questions about it in the future, let us know. It will be voted on at the August 30th board meeting. It will be voted on and approved. And there may be a few minor, small adjustments. I think David found out today that our insurance is going to be a little bit less or more than what we thought it was going to be. Yeah, so there, there may be some minor adjustments between now and August the 30th, but we'll let you know what those adjustments are. That's any different from what we have for that.
And Janine is also, is employees come and go.
Yeah.
You may have somebody leave that was going to get a large adjustment, but obviously, we would adjust that between now, when we've got to get approved and get up close and system. But the sheet you have before you, I just want to point out a few things. They're listed here, but I'll go through them pretty quickly. The increase in property taxes is about 2.2 million. That's with a point oh five rate in Palestine and a point one three six oh five oh rate that we're recommending for the regular district. That is lower. We hit the cap slightly, so we had to get under the cap, which I'll talk about in the next time. We've got about 334 million that was still under protest. I took twenty-five percent of that off in my numbers. We won't lose that much, but just to be conservative. As part of the budget, there's 3.9 million dollars in her funds. It doesn't appear, even at this point, that we will need all that because, as Dr. King just said, the enrollment is up six percent above what it was last year. So that's good news. The salaries that you see in here do encompass the two-year plan, those have been adjusted. Your major repairs are nine hundred thousand. Your cap reserve is at 1.937,300. Contingency funding, I believe, as we're sitting here today, is two million, 533,000. That's the highest it's ever been. Debt's paid off. We've only got $25,000. And again, we're still projecting somewhere between eight and eight point nine billion left over from this year, as years I've over. I think it's, you know, we've still got a pretty good cushion, and with enrollment going up, I feel pretty good about it. I think we're in a pretty good spot. I've talked to our auditor today. He's pretty impressed, too. So if y'all have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Well done. Okay, man, just pretty easy. I appreciate y'all's help. We'll see how it goes from here, and hopefully nothing more dealt with very, or anything like that.
You want to have any questions for night? If not, I hear a motion that we, we don't, we don't, we don't want to do this. Okay, we're moved out of number seven. Consider and discuss the proposed tax rate to support the fiscal year 2021 and 22 budget.
As, I'm gonna let David talk about that, but I just want to say I'm pretty proud of the fact that we're lowering the tax rate. I was looking back, the last four years, the tax rate has been the same. It's been thirteen point eight five. And we haven't, we haven't raised the tax rate in the last four years at TBCC. And so this year, we're, we're going to lower the tax rate. Not a lot, but we are lowering the tax rate. So I think that's something we can brag about. Haven't increased it, and we're actually lowering it a little bit. Of course, we have, we have all the building and all the homes that's being built and all the businesses that are being built in Kaufman County and Hennessy County to thank for all this because of our property tax. David, I'll let you go with it from there. You did all the calculations.
This one?
This one, yes, ma'am. As you all know, we, I have to go through all these calculations every year to calculate the revenue rate and the voter approval rate. You see those at the top. If the, we're able to keep the Palestine rate the same, point oh five, that's maximum anyway. The voter approval rate is point one three six oh five six. I'm recommending that we go to point one three six oh five oh. I don't really like to push my luck right up to the limit, but it's just point zero 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 six. In the middle of the page, we'll scroll down just a little bit. That, that shows you the revenue, a little further. Yeah, that shows you the revenue at the rate that we're recommending. This is just what's being assessed. The, what you see in the budget includes penalty interest. So that makes up your whole budget is this plus penalty interest. So a very, very healthy increase. Again, that's with me taking twenty-five percent out of what you see as under protest. I think we'll pick up even more revenue in this, my personal opinion, but I've never seen anything like it, but that's kind of where we're at. And what we're recommending is, you can see at the bottom of the page, is we have to approve the placement of these tax rates on a future agenda and hold a public hearing. That's the recommendation. And then after y'all do that, then I will publish notices, post them on the website, do all the things required by state law. And what we can do, at the August 30th meeting, we will hold a public hearing, and then y'all can vote on the tax rate, approve the budget. We can do it all in one meeting. And we only have to have one public hearing. As y'all recall, we used to have to separate it out. I'll let you have that. But this rate will keep us below the eight percent cap that would trigger an election. We do not want an election. Anyway, that's the recommendation there at the bottom of the page.
Do you want to have any questions or concerns?
We need to approve this recommendation. We need to approve this recommendation.
Okay, I hear a motion that we approve the recommendation on tax, uh, for your physical twenty-one and twenty-two. Jury makes a motion. Terry seconds motion.
Don't we have to have another hearing before Dr. King attacks him?
We used to.
Well, today, we're not right. We're not approving tax rate.
Okay, all right.
What you're, what you're doing is, what you're approving is the placement of those tax rates on a future agenda and a whole public hearing.
Yeah, more, more or less just a recommendation.
Yeah, here's, approve the placement of the tax rate on a future agenda.
Yeah, okay. All right, and I hear any other comments? If not, I hear motion. Uh, well, we're having a motion seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ron Day?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Ron. All right, that makes it unanimous. And, uh, so thank you, folks, very much. All right, uh, I hear a motion in one of yours. David makes that motion. David seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. I have something I forgot to mention. One of our good representatives, Kelly, is gonna be over in my big city tomorrow on a symposium over there talking about workforce. It's gonna be, it's gonna be countywide. All the big shots are gonna be there and Kelly's gonna be there with us. So Kelly, good luck.
Thank you.